One seventeen cover, will that cover that or begin to cover that topic of trying to have better connectivity?
No.
In high school?
No.
So, from where is that coming? That where is that assigned in the budget?
We paid last year a small project over the summer, so again, because we didn't have a twelve month contract last year.
Right.
We had to pay additional money in order to get that wifi addressed in particular at our high school. Because here we are, have thirteen teachers arguing over one cart and then the cart doesn't work.
Okay.
Doesn't connect, so then you had even more of a barrier. So we honed on on that as a project last summer. And so as far as projects going on throughout this year, we've really had to utilize some of the elementary school project time. Some of our tech team has had to dedicate time to that. So it's put a lot of our tech projects on hold because we've had to really support and that project. As well as we have identified summer projects, but we don't, I don't have a lot of funding to back those projects.
Okay, so in our capital budget, if I could ask, and maybe my colleagues can assist me in this. But we have that two hundred and twenty thousand dollar, you know, item going on for a few years here in, under education. And this is the technology plan. So what is that? I assume that's covering some purchasing of devices. But is there anything else in there?
Yeah.
That, that I should, that you could elaborate on, that we could have a clearer picture of what's being purchased for that?
Sure, so if you think of every room having an access point that can support X number of devices, you need to gain larger accessibility, so, because every student, to your point, could be walking in with a phone. Teacher could be walking in phone, laptop cart's there now, all of a sudden you need an access point that supports fifty devices rather than the twenty devices that you have. Currently, right now, most of our access points in our buildings are in the hallway. So you actually have two teachers across really fighting for one access point that supports twenty-five devices. But you really have about a hundred devices fighting for them, because if I have a cart and personal devices on them. So we use a lot of the capital improvement dollars in order to support switch, additional switches.
Okay.
Access, like today, we had two access points that weren't connecting at all. One of them's dead.
So let me understand that, that money would better address your connectivity issue, especially at the high school.
Yes, but in a, in a very reactive way. I'm going to be honest with you.
Okay.
We'd like for it to be more proactive over time, but we don't have the funds to make it that. But right now it's proactive. I mean reactive, I'm sorry, in nature.
But the grade schools are going to be state of the art, right?
Um, I won't answer.
It's a thirty-seven and a half million dollar.
Well, they're little kiddies.
Alteration project. I'll put, I'll say, I'll put it back.
Thirty-seven million dollars is a lot of money.
Let me ask you this. If you can bring me up to speed. What devices are they? What are they, notepads, iPads? What are they?
Depends on the grade level that you're talking about. Could be iPads, could be laptops, could be desktops.
And what do they use for?
Uh, anything. Projects, assistive technology for students, typing, presenting, cert, researching.
In place of books?
Yes, in some cases.
So if, if the devices are being used for a lot of things, especially books, why did you, you have an increase of twenty-five thousand dollars in the book item?
Software.
So that would be for the purchase of one primary resource for social studies at the middle school level. So out of all the content we teach, I only approved one primary source being purchased for next year.
And you say, the students in the high school, is it every grade that needs a device in high school? Or just like the seniors?
So one of the things that we've been talking about with our technicians is we've been talking about possibly a fifth grade implementation of maybe devices and a ninth grade implementation of device accessibility. Uh, we are just in the planning stages of talking about this, so I don't feel comfortable going into too much. But we've talked about because it's a transition year and you can have it for four years. Transition again, have it for four years. It gives a little bit of a return on investment, because most likely after four years, I'm going to have to do a replacement of some sort.
So you keep the same one for four years?
Yes, yes, that would be our hope.
So none of the students now have devices, which is some?
Uh, it depends. Some students might have them because of their individualized education plans, so it's been approved as part of their plan. Others just have them with whatever environment they're in. So if they're in Akiva, they have availability to that laptop. If they're in an English classroom and that teacher happened to win on the schedule that week, they'll have exposure to them, but...
Yeah, but we have not assigned individual devices to students, other than students that have special education needs.
Now, getting back to a comment Bill made, like a lot of kids have cell phones. I know not everybody does, because a lot of people can't afford them. But I know they start around nine or ten years old, from what I've seen with cell phones. Now, keeping in mind that everybody cannot afford them, has it ever been thought of, like some uniforms or like in some sports, that the parents pay for the devices?
Yep.
Instead of the school?
Yep, it's been a conversation we've been having.
And where has that gone?
It's in discussion. It's, it's a, this is a, this would be a huge implementation and initiative for us.
Yeah.
That we need to think really strategically. Our high school in particular went out and visited several schools that do one-to-one. Got the pros, cons, and really researched. So we're taking our time on this, because I think the other thing is, as educators, we're not in love. We don't want kids walking around all the time with devices in their hands. So we're trying to do that mix of what feels right to us. So I don't want to say, I mean, I have a group of people who are having this conversation, which is a great conversation to have. But I think we're also realizing the weight and the investment that this conversation's going to take. And remember, I'm teaching and learning, so I don't want it to, I want it to positively affect our outcomes, not negatively.
Yeah, it's big, I can get that.
I'm not sold on, on, to be honest with you.
There's a lot that comes with sending devices out and assigning them to kids too, insurance, and then tracking all of that and the cost when one breaks or it doesn't show up the next day or that sort of thing too. So I think there's where the high school has gone out. They've, they've researched both sides of this, you know, do we just have all the devices in-house? When kids get here, here they are, they're charged, they're ready to go. Versus a kid coming to school with their device that, oh, I didn't charge it last night, it's dead, sorry, I can't do my work today. You know, you run into that. So we're going back and forth with a lot of different, what's going to be the best option.
But I did, I can just see that becoming a big expense.
It, it could strategically if you're not really thinking about it.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And that's where a lot of districts have already invested in that and have those things and send them home Chromebooks for all kids. You know, it happens in every district around us. We haven't gone there yet. So there's, we're trying to figure out what's going to be the best. It's in a good way, in a way it's good, because we're kind of, what worked for other districts and what didn't work, sort of thing. We're working off of, you know, their pros and cons.
Yeah, we're, we're really good at not being trendy.
Yeah.
Like, we're really not, we're not like a trendy district in that sense.
That's smart, though.
We really do stop and we really think about it intentionally. I mean, I think that's my big piece of it, is I really sit, we talk about these and we weigh them out. And I, don't, trust me, I get a lot of pressure from teachers that want me to just put a device in everyone's hands. And then I get another one, don't you dare. So there's a camp that I'm really trying to, and then parents feel a certain way about it. I mean, I know how I feel about it as a parent of two children. So, I mean, there's a lot to weigh on it and to do it with intention and to make sure and guarantee that a board of ed there's positive outcomes, takes time. It's a heavy one. It's a have, one of the heavier conversations I've facilitated across the district since I've been here, for sure. So.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Board of Ed? Now, let me go through our question sheet.
Well, we didn't go through nineteen, did we? Oh, yeah, we did.
Yes, we did.
Just one thing on that, because I guess I just don't understand. What's the definition of a blue ribbon school? And how do you become one and how do you fall off the, the list?
Well, yeah, I think the criteria is basically laid out for you right there. You know, it's, you're standardized testing, attendance, graduation rates, your picture of a school as a whole.
Are you monitored every year?
No, not with a blue ribbon, no, it's kind of a...
So once you get on it, you're kind of like cool?
It's an award, basically, yeah.
Oh, oh, it's like an award?
Yeah, it's like a prestigious award.
You're sort of cool for a moment in time.
There you go, you're cool for a moment in time.
So you're cool for a moment in time in the sense that your blue ribbon status was given based on the achievement of that year.
Yeah.
So the amount of students you had that participated in your standardized test, the level at which you achieved for literacy and mathematics on that day of testing when they were given, as well as your graduation rates, and then the amount that you have students involved in extracurricular. Those sort of come together and with our criteria, which is a high performing. With that all being said, all encompassed, you have to be in the top forty percent of high schools on that day as far as performance.
So when's the last time we were evaluated?
So two thousand seventeen is when we were awarded.
Okay.
So...
So they do it at some regular frequency, just so you can?
Yeah.
Be distinguished?
Yep, you apply for it.
Okay, no, it's cool, I just, I didn't know how...
Or actually, you were recommended, the state actually recommended us for...
That's right.
We didn't even apply for it.
Well, our write-up said that we were in the top ten, right?
Yeah, so you can be, you can go ahead, yeah, because you own the criteria, the minimum criteria is to be within the forty. So within the, and our biggest piece of it is we have very high participation that day. So we don't have a lot of families that opt out, and we have a high graduation rate. So that, that certainly helps within that as well, so, sorry, didn't mean to chime in.
But just, just to be clear, once a blue ribbon school, always a blue ribbon school. It's not like you're constantly evaluated over time.
So what's interesting is when we achieved the blue ribbon status, it was based on achievement scores. The State Department has currently released achievement and growth scores. So yes, from the perspective of achievement, once a blue ribbon, always a blue ribbon. But now my job in the, in the district is to guarantee every child's growing, which is what's changed, which is creating a different story. For us, it's a district.
Okay.
So.
And when I made my comments about how the school's performing, I went and I researched the blue ribbon school criteria and our write-up and the state's write-up and all that kind of stuff. And that's why I say with courage and conviction that we are a high performing school. And, and some of my decisions are based on that. All right, additional questions for the Board of Ed?
So, yeah, I have a question on the staffing by school sheet. So I'm looking at proposed levels for twenty-twenty. I'll let you grab it first. So if I look at, I know there's got, this has to be an obvious answer too, because I don't understand how this disparagey, disparage, disparaging numbers. So if I, I'm looking at the certified staff and support staff lines. So I look over in twenty-twenty at Flanders, I did like a little ratio, right, to evaluate the twenty-six point ten number, which is now twenty-five ninety, you got to correct the sheet, and the forty point five two, which comes out to like sixty-four percent if you look at, it's just a simple fraction, right? The ratio of certified staff to support staff. Are we, are you with me so far? If I go down to Lilly B., it's a similar ratio, thirty-three point three certified staff to fifty-three point two support staff. And then I go to Niantic, and I see twenty point six, the new corrected number is twenty-one point one to eighteen point six five, which is a hundred and thirteen percent. Help me out with that. Why is that such an outlier?
So I did not do a projection for, included in that support staff are before and after care people. So again, that's one of the items that will change. Most likely, we won't need, again, depending on the enrollment, you may have more people enrolling now in the Niantic before and after school program. So that number willing, the support staff will increase at Niantic Center. I did not project that, because I didn't really look at...
All right, so go back to nineteen, that's okay. But just look at the same numbers in nineteen. It's still the same kind of ratio.
Yeah.
It's still like sixty-five percent for the first two schools. And Niantic is really over a hundred percent.
Yeah, you've got completely varying programs, though.
Well, that's what I want to understand.
Lilly B. Haynes has, you know, all the preschool programs, the therapeutic programs. You have a high, high need, Flanders too, has those programs, Niantic Center doesn't have any of those programs.
So they don't have a before and after school?
They have a before and after school. Yeah, but it's, no, actually, they don't. Yeah, they do, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the other, yeah, they do. But it's, you're talking a school of a hundred and seventy-five kids, a hundred and eighty kids right now versus, you know, Flanders...
Well, no, I understand that. That's why the ratio should give me some feel.
Yeah, it's program-based.
For the proper staffing levels. And it just seems to be out of whack.
Yeah, all the programs are at the other two schools. So there's no preschool program at Niantic Center. Those are the, where a lot of the staff come into play, especially at Lilly B. Haynes. That's why you see the highest number of support staff at Lilly B. Haynes.
Okay, so more programs at the other two schools? Okay, that explains that. All right, so Jeff, you, you gave me this answer that I thought was great until I sat and thought about it. And I was like, I must not have a full picture. So our per pupil cost is sixteen-four, roughly, right?
Yes.
It's in the handout. And then I asked you what the cost was for kids to go to, out of district to another magnet school.
Varies, yep, between two thousand and seven thousand.
All right, great. Do we get a reduction in our per pupil cost when that kid goes to another school?
Not, no, not for, no, we don't, we pay the magnet school tuition, we don't get a reduction.
Right, but let me, as my, we don't have that kid in our school system anymore.
Correct, yep.
Are we still...
We still own them, but we don't have them in our school.
Do we still have to pay sixteen, like, how do we, how do you calculate the sixteen? You take the cost of the staff divided by the kids?
Yeah, it's a, it's a number generated by the state of Connecticut. We don't generate that number. It is based on actual costs from two thousand, so the, the number that we gave you is the two thousand seventeen eighteen per pupil expenditure.
All right, the way you calculate that, though, is like total costs divided by the number of kids, roughly speaking?
Exclusions divided by the number of children gives you the per pupil cost.
So if the number of kids goes down?
That per pupil cost would go up, assuming our, assuming expenditures are the same.
All right, so, so there's no savings to us when a kid goes to another school? The per pupil cost goes up?
That per pupil cost is a number used to determine what we get for excess cost grant. That, that's the number that we take, that's sixteen thousand, and if it's an outplaced student, it's sixteen thousand.
All right, but it doesn't go down if the number of kids go down?
No.
I don't think so, at least now.
Do you understand my question?
Yeah, yeah.
Because on top of the sixteen-four, then we'd be paying...
You're paying a magnet school tuition too, yeah.
So that's how that works. So there's no savings to us at all, even though there's one less kid that we're teaching?
No, and I mean, for one student to...
Does everybody agree on that?
Your overall cost, yeah.
Yes, everybody agrees on that.
No, I don't know that that's necessarily true, because if every student went to a magnet school, the staff level would go down and the math would be different. I don't think we're smart enough to know that yes, exactly one student going for seven thousand will decrease the cost. But logically, if everybody went to magnet schools, operating costs for the schools would go down and there would be a positive impact.
That's true, yeah.
So that's kind of, kind of weird to think about.
A low volume, I don't think we'd see. I think if a lot of people went to magnet schools, you'd see.
Why schools are up near, closer to Hartford, just absolutely hate magnet schools, because those, those add to their student pool.
It sucks all their kids out, and they still have to pay for them.
They have the, the, the special classes, the A and P classes, things like that. They don't have the students.
How many kids do we send out to other schools?
I knew you were going to ask that.
How did you know that, Jeff?
That's what I was going with.
I like it.
Magnet school, right? So a total of, let's see, we have, for, as a three thirty-one eighteen, we have twenty-five students going out to various multicultural magnet, winter magnet, David Hale magnet, Du Language Academy, STEM magnet, marine science magnet, and science technical high school. And then also...
And what's the total cost? Do you have that number? I know it varies per school, but...
Um, I, I don't off the top of my head.
I can get it too.
It used to be around, it wasn't around two, two hundred thousand or somewhere in there?
Boy, that's chunky.
It is, probably, because some of them are, uh, some are correct and some are a little bit less.
But our, you know, our numbers have been pretty, pretty stagnant. We're not seeing what's good. We're not seeing an increase of kids wanting to go to magnet.
Yeah.
In fact, I have to feel like we've seen even more come back. Because the, actually, the difference, I can tell you right now, the difference from three thirty-one eighteen to, well, three thirty-one nineteen is, is one, sorry, I thought there was going to be a bigger difference, but it's one to, so...
Those twenty-five kids that are currently going to magnet schools are not included in the student population figures, correct?
Yes, they're not. We kept them totally separate, but they're our kids.
Right.
And could go back anytime, yeah.
Okay, one last, I wonder if I can find the sheet. You gave us a sheet of, you know, the one with Ledgerd and staffing numbers.
US for the DIRD.
Yep, I did.
And again, yes, not, not...
Okay, here it is.
But it was basically counts of, you wanted to know a comparison of the class, their grade level numbers versus number of staff. So we pulled the five towns that were close to us in our DIRD in size. And these were just counts off of their website, went to their website and counted the total number of teachers they had.
So do you do any analysis with this info?
Other than providing it for you at this current moment, I have not done any further analysis, no.
So what I did is I just, for fun, I totaled up all the kids pre-K through eighth and then nine through twelve. Across, I threw out Ledgerd, because their numbers in the high school were kind of a little bit of an aberration in terms of, I was trying to compare, I was trying to split it into those two groups. So I didn't want the data to be skewed, so I said I'd rather have less data than data that is going to skew the, the picture. And I totaled up the number of kids and then I totaled up the number of teachers. And, because, let's face it, our staff is, that's a big driver. We got to look at salaries and benefits, and that's really where we need to be chipping away to say, are we optimally staffed? So I looked at those numbers and I found that, roughly speaking, we have the, what's the right word? Lowest or highest? Approximately, let me just say this, there's approximately seventeen kids per student, roughly speaking, in our schools, and all the rest of the schools are higher. And I just thought that was something that you might look at from this data. And I know you said it's not apples to apples, and all kinds of data has to be footnoted, I get all that. But I think this is a worthwhile analysis. It's worth, it's very valuable data for you guys to take a look at, because it appears that of these other schools, unless my math is wrong, but I, I don't think it is.
So you think our student to teacher ratio is about seventeen to one?
Four, yeah. Yep, when I, when I totaled these up and then I looked at them in the other schools, they're nineteen point eight, eighteen point nine, Rocky Hills twenty-one, Waterford's nineteen point five. And I, I welcome you to look at this in case I made an error on it. But I, I, I think it's important, and the conclusion I get from this is that we're a little fat in the staff department. And I would welcome you to look at that, too.
Yeah, and you know, a great number for you to look at, at least, and we could work together on it, is when it comes to the special education population of teachers and support staff and the number of kids that, you look at these districts, and if you went and researched how many of the kids are outplaced for services versus the low number that we have. We have higher staff numbers, because we're supporting kids in-house and not spending hundreds of thousands of dollars and millions out. So, you know, we, we might show higher, higher staffing numbers. And some of these other groups might have co-teaching, we don't, you know, you've, you've got part-time teachers, full-time teachers, point seven teachers, point, so it, there's the apples, it's not apples to apples. But I, I get, I hear you, absolutely, I hear what you're saying.
I just think it's worthwhile to take a look at, because it's the biggest piece of your budget. And it would be good for you to, to understand what the data tells, because...
Yeah, I think you really, it'd be a good comparison to look at special ed totals versus, you know, and then do the comparison and the money that we're saving by our programs in-house with more in-house staffing versus kicking kids or something.
Clearly, we don't want to jeopardize those programs.
No, not at all, because it costs a lot more money.
And I'm not suggesting we do. But I'm suggesting that if, when we do stuff, we, we benchmark for a reason. I think there's something to get out of this analysis.
So you're saying the student to a teacher population ratio would be more accurate if you excluded the special ed? Then you, maybe you could better compare school systems to school systems?
I, I think it'd be very hard to compare. You'd have to do a total deep dive and actually find out exactly how many FTEs each of those teachers are at each grade level and then their total popular, uh, special education teaching staff, both certified, non-certified, to do a real, real deep comparison versus the total number of their population at each grade level. I'm saying it couldn't be done, but it would, you know, I tried to give you kind of a snapshot of that based on the, on the question.
But I gotta believe that the state or somebody publishes state averages, so that you can dive into your own data and compare it to a state average.
Yep, as long as, yeah, as long as we're comparing apples to apples, sort of thing, that's the most important, but, yeah.
Okay, further questions?
I'm all set.
John?
I'm all set too.
John?
I'm all set.
Camille?
I'm set.
They're all set with the Board of Education. Thank you all.
Thanks. How's your process, if I mind me asking, how's your process looking? You meet again Wednesday, I think?
Yes.
Are you starting deliberations at that time?
So we're deliberate, I mean, this is all part of deliberations, is basically getting answers to our questions. Next Wednesday, we have our regular meeting, and then we have the deliberations afterwards. Depending on how productive we'll be on Wednesday, we may, this Wednesday, the tenth, we may or may not have to add an extra meeting for the April fifteenth. That'll come up later.
Are you sure you mean the fifteenth? I didn't think there were any meetings that week. I thought the next one was the twenty-seventh.
What I'm proposing is, we may, depending on how things go on the tenth, we may have to add a night on the fifteenth. Just right now, it's going to depend on how far we get next meeting. Anyway. Mortar fall.
Plan on seeing you Wednesday.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
So yes, Wednesday, if you come in, if you can keep your comments brief, it'll get us focused on further deliberations.
Please, like, count me in for that.
We don't have to say it. Is that a regular meeting this Wednesday?
Yeah.
It's regular plus deliberations.
Not to lead the witness, but, um, okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So that closes old business outstanding information. So item E. on the agenda is new business budget deliberations. So as I proposed earlier in the meeting, I think the deliberations, unless there's something specific that somebody would like to bring in tonight, I think we all need to look at our three main buckets of money. Our Board of Ed, our town budgets, and our capital plan. And we need to each think long and strong about what we think appropriate areas of, of modification may be. I'm sorry, Anna brought us back in our new capital sheets.
So there is new capital sheets and I, um... So there's one each of these and this. Oh, thank you. So, um, let's do the capital plan and then I'll go over the other sheet. I just did that because I thought it would be easier.
So is there only one sheet here, or what's this other sheet?
It's, um, it's the spreadsheet that's in your budget books, itemizing all the different capital items. So I just thought...
Is there just one sheet?
It's one piece of paper.
Oh, okay.
So on the capital plan, with regards to the revow, we currently have, let's say, two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in the CNRE fund. And I went back over my discussions with, with Diane and how she did the calculation. And it was more like we'd need, let's say, between four hundred and seventy, four hundred and eighty thousand. So, um, that's the reason that we had...
I'm sorry, I, I was out of the room. Could you just tell me what item you're referring to?
The revow.
Okay.
Okay, so I just, that was one of the things I needed to do, is just get into the details on that for you.
So those numbers didn't change?
No, they stayed the same. Now, the way that we're going to do the bid, we're actually going to go out to bid in the beginning of two thousand and twenty. So when, by the time we're at this point in the budget process, we're going to have, we should have the results of the bid. So we may be able to tweak down the number next year, if, if it comes in lower than we're estimating. Of course, if it comes in higher, then we would need to increase it. But I think, you know, that, that's just the way it is at this point.
Did we say that... Go ahead.
I'm not sure I, I follow that, because even with the increased estimated cost of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, if we, if we already have two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars put away...
No, I said two hundred and nineteen.
Oh, okay.
It was two...
It was two eighty-two before you left the room, but yeah.
Well, I was just speaking without looking it up, I'm sorry.
What that number again is?
It's, you know, it was two eighteen nine twenty-five, so two hundred and nineteen thousand.
thousand.
And there was discussions about going in with another town to get a lower rate or does that include that? Didn't you say in the past that we were talking about going in with old Lime or somebody?
In the past, we've done the RFP with Waterford and, like, we were each at different times. We were one year apart and so, you know, our thought was if the revow company, it was the same revow company, then there are certain things that they don't have to do over again because they're already situated in the area. So, I'm not sure if, I think, I'm not sure if Diane mentioned if she was gonna do that next time. So, then, the next thing was the CNRE totals. So, on, actually, on the spreadsheet, it included, if you look at the total of one ninety-five oh sixty, it included the eight thousand dollars for the Waterford boat on the CIP, it was not highlighted in brown.
Where do I see one ninety-five sixty?
Where are we here?
Okay, so in...
Department seven twenty-four.
Yeah, in Department seven twenty-four, so you'll see that on the spreadsheet. The total for the CNRE subsidy is one hundred and ninety-five thousand sixty dollars. And so, what it was missing to make the total on the CIP tie out with the totals that were in your budget book is the eight thousand dollars for the Waterford boat. So, the total reflected now at the bottom of three hundred and sixty-five thousand sixty dollars is comprised of the one hundred and ninety-five thousand sixty dollars, that's part of the capital budget, plus the one hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the police vehicles that will be purchased through the acquisition program and the funding for the payments is gonna be in the CNRE fund. So, the next question was to double check the numbers in black. So, you'll notice on your revised sheet, the town share is one hundred and forty-one thousand four hundred dollars. And so, on the one-page document that I distributed to you, I have highlighted all of the items that make up that one hundred and forty-one thousand four hundred dollars. However, the one difference is, in the CIP plan, you asked me to remove the nineteen thousand dollars for the police server, so the nineteen thousand is still one of the items that's highlighted in the actual department budget, so that'll be, like, once the board makes the action, then the two will agree. So, you'll notice down in the lower right, the total is one hundred and sixty thousand four hundred dollars. When we remove the nineteen thousand from the budget document, it'll be one hundred and forty-one thousand four hundred dollars as noted in the CIP document.
Did everybody follow that or is it just me?
You did not follow it?
It's gonna get removed, so this is gonna go down by nineteen thousand.
Which sheet are you looking at?
This one.
The second sheet that she gave us.
Oh, okay.
This nineteen thousand is gonna be removed.
Right.
So, the eight forty-one turns to what number?
All right, I just did the, I was just talking about the total of the items that are highlighted.
Oh, the thermal imaging and the two-way battery and that whole thing?
Yes, all of those items are what, are intended to tie out to what's in the CIP. It's reflected at one hundred and forty-one thousand four hundred dollars because the CIP removed the nineteen thousand. The nineteen thousand is not yet removed from the budget.
All right, so now I go back to this one.
Six, eleven, two.
And I see one forty-one. So, if I look at this capital plan, where do I see the one forty-one at?
On page five.
Page five, yeah?
And so...
Oh, it's at the top, is that town one forty-one?
Yes.
Okay, you, okay, I'm sorry.
Let me see there.
You talked it backwards, I just, I'm, it's me. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, all right, so that's that one, I moved that. And then, sure...
Can I, everything that's highlighted on this page equals the one hundred and forty-one thousand four hundred?
No, it equals one hundred and sixty thousand four hundred. When the board takes the action to remove the server from the budget, it'll be one forty-one four.
So, that math is right here in the corner where it says one sixty-four minus nineteen is one forty-one four.
Okay.
So, you did the math for us in the corner?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, see in the, see in the column here? So, for the Waterford boat, I wrote, it says CNRE and all the, where it's, you know, the sum of, which is now one sixty-four, those are all the, you know, the items, just, you know, to have another marker for yourselves.
Okay.
Then, all the other thing, items are the acquisition payments.
Tell me about that unhighlighted.
Yes. Okay, and I did not, in the CIP, I did not change the vehicles for the fire, Flanders' Fire Chief and the Fire Marshal, because I wasn't clear about whether or not you wanted me to do that. However, I will mention to you that to purchase a vehicle for fifty-five thousand, the estimated acqui, no, it's fifty thousand, I think, yes.
Yes, for Flanders, it is.
So, so, to purchase a fifty thousand dollar vehicle, the acquisition payments would be, say, ten thou, I have estimate of ten thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. If we purchase a vehicle of thirty-five thousand for them, the payments would be about seventy-five hundred and sixty dollars, so, so, you know, about a thirty-two hundred dollars difference, so, just...
Per year.
Yeah, so just so that you, you have that.
I think we all talked about that. Didn't we all agree that a thirty-five thousand dollar vehicle was the way to go?
I don't think we ever took a...
Well, we didn't make motions on anything.
No, you, you, two of you, three of us agreed on it.
So, the vehicle acquisition number that right now is four fifteen will go down by what are those two numbers?
So, let me just see what they're in here for right now. Fifty and fifty, so, there would be a reduction of thirty thousand because we would be reducing each vehicle by fifteen thousand.
So, this four fifteen would go down fifteen thousand per vehicle?
Yes.
So, three eighty-five.
Per vehicle. If we did not buy those two vehicles, and there was a question about a third vehicle because the police said they had three vehicles.
Well, they want a spare.
Yes, I need a spare, I'll drive it all my year.
Well, would the spare is used for...
Yes, this, this flow down.
I mean, you've got three shifts a day and then if one of the vehicles has to be in repair, that would be when your spare is used.
Somebody's gonna go to the back of the lot and pick up the dog and say, okay, I gotta drive this pig today.
Exactly, yeah, that's pretty much what happens there.
So, when they're not using it, it's gonna be a new vehicle just sitting there waiting?
No, no, the new one is gonna be used, the worst one of the fleet is gonna be put on the back of the lot and the spare is gonna be whatever flows down to be the worst.
That's not what the plan says, but, okay.
Yeah, that's what he explained to us though, when Joe came in, he said that the dog, the one that nobody wants, the worst, worst vehicle is the one that sits and becomes the spare.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, what else?
So, all right, that was moved out, we already talked about that. Okay, so, Commission on Aging, the vehicle replacement items are now highlighted in red, although it's black on your sheet.
I'm looking for red.
It's at the top of page three.
That's for next year, right?
Right, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, so those are the only things.
So, what does this put the total, do we have a total?
That's what I'm trying to get to next, is if I go back to this capital, total.
From four, one, four, seven, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, sixty-ten, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one hundred and fifty, one hundred and fifty thousand, 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 one hundred and fifty So, it looks like it is the adult stacks, the reading room, and into four side rooms. I don't know what the four side rooms are, but...
But not like, not the children's library, it sounds like.
No.
Sounds like it's the rest of the space.
Unless that would be one of the side rooms, I don't know. But they do have some small rooms, you know, from memory.
So, how long would that be bonded over?
This we're going to, this is...
Just all at once, one...
Right, we're funding to pay for it.
Okay, so...
So, that would reduce her budget by...
Not her budget, the capital budget. I just want to point that out to you while we're talking about it so that you can...
I would be in, since we're moving the fire truck out for 550 next year, I'd be in favor of funding the whole thing this year. Otherwise, we're just moving more stuff next year. I would say let's, let's, let's just do that entire carpet this year.
It is 30 years old.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, just, and it's, I think, I mean, I've heard it now for two years. So, you all have been hearing it for more years about how, how it really needs to be dealt with and replaced, so. Yeah, I agree with that. Leave the 45 in.
Okay.
90.
No, we're cutting it.
No, no, the whole carpet is 90.
Yeah.
I was trying to, and what I'm hearing is, I mean, I couldn't figure out how they were going to figure out exactly which tiles to replace. It seemed like it was... So, what I think I'm hearing everybody say now is because we've moved 190,000, or however much the fire truck was out.
550.
900, $90,000 this year, seems like it's a good thing to keep in this year because we're moving other things into next year. So...
I thought we just said we could do $45,000 of this scope.
If we did not want to do the entire library.
Which we don't.
Why not, though? I guess is what I'm saying, Lisa, because when, if we're moving out 550,000 for a fire truck into next year. Now, we're not going to bond that all in one year. That'll be over a number of years. So, whatever amount that is, we're pushing it out, though. Do we also want to push out another 45 to do half the carpet next year?
Well, maybe, maybe they don't need it all right now. Maybe the other 45 can...
No, but, yeah, that's true. But think about the impact of our budget next year. When we're, when we're pushing another 45 out together with the 550. What's going to happen next year when the budget rolls around?
Yeah.
Oh, God, we can't raise the budget that much in capital because...
We're going to have 38 million bonded out next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, and in theory, you have the other fire truck as well unless we suggest something else or where something else is suggested, like joint forces.
So, I'm, what I'm, I guess in my mind, I'm thinking maybe cuts can come from other areas, you know, if we need to. But this is one that we could probably absorb this year.
Okay.
In the capital. I think it's in our best interest.
Yeah, I think at some point, you can't push everything out or, and then it just really starts to snowball.
Okay. So, as we look at all these things that we've added and subtracted, if we do not subtract the library 90,000, of the items on page five, we're comparing it to in the budget form that you gave us. It used to be capital was 841,728. So, now if we add up on this one here, we add the town 141,000 and the capital nonrecurring. Is that the two numbers or, it's got to be more than that to get to 800,000?
Right, so...
And the...
I was just focusing on the questions that, that were asked. So, the, what I needed to clarify was the water, well, the $8,000 that, from the CIP that didn't agree with the 195,060, it was off by 8,000. The 8,000 for the Waterford Police Boat was included in the budget document. However, on the CIP plan, the $8,000 for this, was not coded CNRE. It was just left black. So, it was just not in the right bucket at the bottom at the end of the report. So, the remainder of the items were the town's funding sources, the information in the black. It was difficult to determine, like, the total. There was a question about the total. So, that's why I highlighted all these items for you so that you would know what items on this report were to make up the total for the black items on the CIP.
That's the 141. I'm trying to get on our total budget sheet, the total that you have for this year is 841,728?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm trying to find out from these numbers here, which ones add up to something that's probably around 790,000, maybe even less than that. So, so which of these numbers add up to be this box on the proposed budget form?
The 841,000?
Yes.
They all do.
No, but he's saying now the number's going to be less, right?
But the, but the bonds do not, right? The bonds go up to the above one for debt services.
Okay, so from the CIP, oh, okay. So, you, you're looking at...
I'm trying to figure out what 841 is today.
Okay, so 841 is the 195,060 for the CI, the CNRE subsidy, the 160, the 160,400, which are all the items we're funding in the capital account. And then the remaining difference are acquisition payments.
She's totaling it for you, don't worry.
Okay.
Because I'm with you on that camp.
Because these, I don't add these numbers and these numbers.
That's right. She's going to do it for us because I was in the same camp.
I was looking for three of these numbers that add up to 841. It's not low, Sid.
So, the remaining acquisition payments would be 486,268.
486.
268.
So, we have that number, we have the 195,060.
Right.
And 141.
And then the 160,400.
141,400.
It's, it's 160,400. It'll be 141,400 when the board makes a motion to reduce that budget by 19,000.
Okay, so it's 486,268 for the actuation plan. Actuation, I'm okay.
Acquisition, acquisition plan.
The town portion of the capital is 141,400, assuming that we make the motion that we discussed earlier. And what's the third number that I'm adding to this? The capital nonrecurring, 365?
No, 141,060. Sorry, 195,060, the municipal number.
195.
So, I get a total of 822,78.
And then the 160,400, 160,400.
Yeah, but I assumed that we're going to pay, we're going to get rid of the 19.
822,728.
Right, right. So, right here. 141 and 195,060, that's it.
You did the math already? 822.
So, what do we need to do to make the 19,000 come out? Do we have to vote on it or something?
When, when we get into the deliberations, we'll vote on the specific line items.
Okay, so that's 40,000.
So, we're going to capture that, right?
What's that?
We're going to capture that. We're going to remember that.
Who's "we" and what's that? What are you saying?
We would be all of us in the room that next Wednesday, when we get together and start making these motions, we remember what it is we talked about tonight. So, I'm trying to take notes.
We could actually make a motion.
That I can nail these back and forth to here to here.
I like how you're thinking.
Let's just do it tonight and get it out of the way.
Right, no, we don't have to worry about it.
A motion for accepting a capital plan of 822,728?
No, 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 just that one line item.
Oh.
Removing the 19,000 capital item from the...
And the next time Anna issues it to us, it won't, we don't have to think about it. It's already in there. So, I will make that motion if you'll be ready to accept it.
All right, so Anna, you can move that 19,000 out of that form. This is not, this is just us coming up with our total. Go ahead, Anna, you want to make the motion, we'll make the motion and then we'll add it into the remotion.
I make a motion, we remove 19,000 for police service from the capital plan.
Okay. I got a motion to remove 19,000 from the police server, or the service from the police capital plan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other conversation about the motion to move the servers from the police department? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, moved, 600.
Fine.
Oh, sorry, Jason. Again, we're going to actually re-action that motion at the next meeting, but that'll be for housekeeping. We'll have knowledge that we did that. Anything else under deliberations that we'd like to talk about tonight?
Well, we do, I guess we're going to do the town on another night.
So, the expectation is in the next meeting, at the end of the regular meeting, we've got three numbers that we have to agree on. We've got the capital number that we were just working on now. Debt services is a finite number and it's going to, and it's going to tell us what that number is and it's not going to change. We're going to have the town portion of the budget and the Board of Ed portion of the budget. So, there's three numbers that I would like everybody here to have an understanding of what they propose that that number is, or at least what areas that they propose that we remove from. I know in past years, there was some consternation about coming up with an actual value, but that's what we're going to have to end up doing. So, hopefully, we can do that Wednesday night. And if not, we'll schedule a follow-on meeting for a later date. Are we all good with that? Do we all think we have the information that we need to make that recommendation for those three buckets of money? Do we need anything else from the town to help support that effort? Hearing none. I will close budget deliberations and move to public discussion. Public discussion, anybody who wants to, there's nobody here. So, we will close public discussion because there's nobody here. Item G, board comments. Is there anybody on the board that would like to make a comment about anything that's on the agenda current for future?
Anna, can you email this? Oh, I'm sorry, I mean to wake you. I'm kidding.
Wake? Oh, that was right.
I was having a little fun with you. Anna?
Yes.
Can you email this? It's in color, right?
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay.
And you're going to email it without the 19,000 in it, right? Because we just approved to remove it.
It was already removed when I gave it to you.
Yeah, it's not there.
Yes, it's not there.
Oh.
I just made it official.
That's all.
I didn't know why we had the little calc over here if it was already removed, but okay, whatever.
Well, that was just so you could see.
When it rolled into the next sheet.
Sorry, there's just been a lot of stuff to tour through, okay?
All right, I'd like to hear a motion to adjourn. I have a motion in a second, whichever order, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, moved, 500. Jason didn't vote.
So, our meeting is at 6:30, oh, 7 o'clock on Wednesday, right?
Saturday.
Well, it's a regular meeting. That's why I'm asking, is it?
Yes, 7.
I can look.